Hey everyone, welcome to day one of our requirements gathering with me series. So this is a hands-on series where we'll work together like real business analyst. Gathering requirements from live screens, uh live scenarios using the same tools professionally used in the IT industry. So if you are new here, don't worry, you don't need to be technical. So our our goal is um over these ten days to help you understand how business analysts capture business needs and convert them into clear structured requirement that developers and testers can actually use. So today's day one and we are starting with the with one of the most common and powerful techniques, the stakeholder. So we'll work on a real world project called the name correction digitalization project. So this is a banking scenario where a small manual process will be turned into a digital solution. So we'll go step by step and from understanding the business problem to identify stakeholders to typing line notes inside the Confluence. So if you don't have Confluence yet, go ahead and open your browser and sign up uh www.atlasian.com. So once you login uh with your email and create a free account, so once you are in created new space and blank page, we will use it capture requirement just like a real BA does in a project. So uh let me show you uh how to go to the conference. So if you don't have, just simply use your word document, that should be fine. Okay, so I'm gonna use uh Confluence. You can just type Confluence. Um I have a free account, so you can use your Gmail account or other account to login. So I am coming back to the same account, so that's why I'm saying uh welcome back. But otherwise you can use a Gmail or whatever account to sign in like other accounts. Okay, so this will set up a pre-conference. So let's give it a few minutes to set up this one. So go to conference page. Okay, and if you're in Jira, so from Jira also you can uh just skip this one. I just need the page only, okay? Get started, okay? So these are free versions, okay? You can uh sign up with free, okay? Uh so this is what I'm talking. Uh page. So if you are already logged in with Jira, so from Jira also you can uh switch up here, you can see something. Uh Jira or like you can see conference here, so you can search from there as well, okay? Since we came directly there, so you can uh create page. Sometimes um if you are using a paid version, your page looks different, so it's the same concept, okay? So let's let's use our uh stakeholder. Let's copy and paste it here. That's our page three. Okay. Okay, let me publish this one. Okay. Okay, this means. Okay. Now we can start our adding concept here, okay? So I click edit and I'm here, okay? So now let's start with the background, okay? So let me write. So this is, you can use um you can use first um uh word here, then you can either either way fine, okay? So we are just uh understand what is the project scope and uh oh you can use Excel or whatever the document uh in use in your company, you can use, it doesn't matter. So what I will do, I'll uh use word here just to set the background and require note, we will put it here and final we'll capture there in conference, okay? So right now um in most traditional banking for customer notice their name is spelled incorrectly. Uh customer name is spelled incorrectly on their banking profile, okay? So they can't, this is the project we are going to work, okay? They can't fix it online. So this is the problem. So we are going to make it digitalize this one. So they have to call the call center, the current flow is uh call the call center, ask for a name correction, okay? So if they ask the name correction, the call center agent will give a form. So the customer have to fill out this uh fill out this form and attach ID proof and send it to, send it uh back by email, okay? So this is what happening. So this is a manual process. So next step, then uh the back office. Back office agent manually verifies the details and updates the name uh in the core banking system, okay? So this is the current process, this is what happening. So the problem is customer name misspelled and customer notice, so customer want to get corrected, customer calling the call center because there is no online access. So that's why um so call center agent saying, okay, fill up the fill out this form and send your ID proof, we will um send it back, okay? We will correct your name in the system. So once uh customer send this form and the back office agent receive this one manually verify the detail and correct in the system. Okay, so this process um slow and manual. Okay, so let's write this one slow and uh and manual and again it's can be error, right? Like event um error. And also customer of concern incomplete forms or forget attachment or and take three to five business days before the name finally corrected, right? So wherever the manual process in once, so again uh it's not efficient, okay? So this is what's happening. So our bank wants to digitalize this process, so um future state, so want to wants to to digitalize this process, okay? So customer can login online, fill up a uh form online, upload their ID and track the status of their request. So this project is great example, a new business analyst, because it's a small, but it involves real world challenges, multiple stakeholders, manual steps, compliance checks and opportunities for the automation, okay? Uh so let's start with the current manual process. So here you capture, right? Like when you uh when you get intake or when you take uh new project, so you will get some notes or like a control on speech or like a small meeting, something you will get something. So now this isn't the high level requirement, right? So we don't have any detail. Um so before you go to the interview session, try to collect the more information, right? Like a uh you more information mean what is the current status? That's very important, right? So if there is no information documentation, anything, that's fine, but I I'm pretty sure uh if someone is changing from manual to um digital, so there might be some documentation or like you can bring a person and see how this is working like for the customer. So you can uh start writing down kind of this documentation, right? Like you use any, I'm using word, so you can use spreadsheet or notepad or whatever prefer for you. Try to capture the more detail um at least before the call, okay? So we are going to meet the stakeholder, they are going to give us a requirement. Um but it's good to have the um kind of a context before you go to the call, okay? So based on this information, what I would be doing like I'll go to spreadsheet and I will um use a process mapping uh current state versus future state. So I'm not going to switch back to the spreadsheet, let's capture here. Um so because we have some information, right? So I will um start ahead before the call. So while I am in the call, so I can ask this question because I have an idea now, right? So what's happening? So it's very important uh if you can prepare. Sometimes you are not able to do this one, that's fine, but at least um have a checklist or like a set of questions, what should be asking? Because this uh process can be followed for any project, right? So I'm just documenting what we know, okay? Uh report. The more you write, more you talk, the more you uh ask questions, so the requirement will be clarified, right? Because for us, it's the first time we are here, for the stakeholders, um that's their day-to-day job, right? So you have to write it or like a create a diagram and show them to, so they so that uh you can double check is that my understanding correct? So they will correct you, but before do that, you need to get solid understanding what's going on today. So let's, I'm just documenting uh my understanding. Fill signs and and returns the form along with ID proof, okay? Number four, back office agent verifies the form and ID, then uh update the system manually. Okay, and customer receive confirmation. Sometime no cast uh confirmation, but we just want to document is our current, so current manual process, okay? So let's write that. So if you are wondering like how how do I come up with before uh meeting with them, right? So that's why I said like the moment you hear uh new project is coming or enhancement is coming. So if you have cycles, I'll start digging into that, right? Before um my my practice is like, I just find out who is the stakeholder, the stakeholders are. So I ping them and I ask them, do you have few minutes? So if they say yes, we are going to start a new um project for your enhancement. I just want to learn how uh the current process, how do you handle customers, how the customers are going through? What is the customer journey? So by talking to them, they can explain you. So this is the customer journey, current customer journey. The future customer journey will be here, right? So let's document here. So this is what expected you need to create it, okay? After you talk. So before, I just want to give you the picture, what we are going to talk, what you are going to listen from the stakeholders, okay? So you may not have this one before you start, but just the background, this is what we uh we have to do. So select name correction. Okay, uh customer login to online banking portal, select a new correct request. We don't know, we are just um assuming, right? Something uh you get a design and everything, but just to our side, kind of uh mark everything, upload. System auto validate complete. After still what is wrong? Okay, and back office. See one small requirement we have to capture. All right, okay. Uh customer gets instant notification once the update is complete. Okay, so our goal is as a BA to bridge the gap between these two states, right? From the manual process to accessing to data digital solution, the business one tomorrow, right? So before begin the call, you if you don't have any information, that's fine. At least head start your uh document, right? Like a what you have, like a one line or two line based on the email invite, based on some uh whoever setting the call or if you are the one setting the call, you don't have more detail. But if business want to provide us requirement, if they sitting up the call, they will give you agenda, they will give you attachment like a user manuals or something. So before you go to call, you cannot tell, I didn't get a time. So at least uh just before the thirty minutes go and try to get captured background. Uh what do you know about the current process? What is the expected solution? Or if you don't know, that's fine, but at least had started uh on the document, that would be nice, okay? Um so now every project start with identify who's involved, right? Uh let's list all the stakeholders from the project, right? When you go to the meeting, so this is very important. You cannot bring random people and because sometime uh when you're working with this type of project, the existing uh user, who are the call center agent, they are not allowed to talk to your IT IT uh project team, right? So there are specific person you need to contact, uh you cannot contact all the customer service agent, you cannot contact all the back office agent, right? There are specific team who works on this uh workflow, so you need to get this information, right? Uh who should I contact, any clarification required, right? That's a uh identify the uh stakeholder, okay? Okay, so this all can go in your this little personal uh note taking, whatever the software you use, that's fine, so stakeholders for this project. So you can think these are baby step, yes, it's baby step, but you know uh if someone is starting from scratch, this is very useful, right? So we don't know, uh like after four, five years, we don't know, we don't do this uh listing stakeholders or anyone like uh usually you get it in the project document, but if you are just beginning and writing down these things, very useful, okay? So don't ignore. So for us, uh we hear couple of people uh here. So we have customer. Uh so let's write down all the entity, right? What who have here, okay? So customer, um the person whose name is incorrect, obviously, right? Who requests request the change? Okay, I'll bring this one here so that we can everything in one page. So next one, call center. Agent, we have call center agent. You can see this semi-colon, okay? Uh receives customer calls and sends forms today. You are thinking it's a lot of work, uh redundant, like we haven't had this detail um there also. Right? So we have entered here, but it's okay, like if you are so confident, that's okay, you don't need to repeat this one, okay? So I am keep on repeating this one, so that you will, the more you write, more you talk, you can uh clarify on the requirement. But if you are a senior BA or advanced BA, you don't need to this one, so just by listening uh to the conversation, you can start writing the user story, okay? So you need a couple of years experience to do that one. So and even new BS can do that one, that's not a problem, but I'm just telling, if someone is completely coming to the IT background, starting this work tomorrow, so they can follow this on advanced BS, you can uh skip this process. So we have compliance officer, oh, I am uppercase. B L I C. Can see the keyboard, okay? Uh ensures ID verification and regular dairy compliance. Okay, what's going on right here? Okay, who else we have? IT team, which is the your team, okay? Your team responsible for building the new online system, okay? And okay. That's it. So these are our um stakeholder. Uh this good. So next, now how do we convert this business idea into a requirement? So as a business analyst, our job start with a simple business problem. In the, in this case, customer cannot correct their name, we have enough information, right? So we documented. Um so we first listen, talk to the right people, understand how they work and what problem they are facing, right? So that's we talk to call center agent and the back office agent, right? And next we document, organize what we are heard in the structured node. Finally, we translate um translate, we turn into information into clear requirement that developers can implement it. So let me write down um what we need here. Uh we first first we listen, next we document. Okay, third, we translate. Okay, so these are the main three steps, any requirement we need to do, okay? Listen to people or read, read the document or listen to the people at the stakeholders and take your note. You document uh row idea into requirement from requirement to user story, okay? Uh for the idea. Right? So here the requirement. So here. So user stories, okay? So that's what we will today, using Confluence as our main documentation tool, okay? Uh let's open the conference page, so we don't need the background here, so we already open. Uh stakeholder interview. And also I can name it customer. Sorry. So now I'll remove the title because this for your understand, so this is going to be your Confluence page, okay? Uh what is our project name? Sorry. Customer name. Sorry, correction. All right, okay. So this is our project name, I'll um name it. Uh here, how I will structure this one, okay? So because I'm planning to um capture this one before before I go to the meeting, I'll structure this one. Or after after the meeting, it doesn't matter, you take the note and later on you can come and decorate this page or like a update here. Or we, okay, so this is one section, sorry, what is this? Okay, and stakeholders. Okay, and current process. So I'll prepare everything and enter new notes, okay? I have and pain point. So you have to know why you are doing this under uh what is the reason? So sometimes you need to fill out documents, so you have to know what is the reason you are doing. Future state. We said, okay, so I'll have this one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay? So everything uh in you can you can have in all your conference page, you can create duplicating or cloning this page, you can have any project, you can use the same tablet, okay? So so our main goal, convert manual or proper base name, paper base name correction into a online self uh workflow, that's a business call, right? So whenever I start documenting, um I like to set the goal in one sentence, okay? So what is the problem we are solving? That sentence become your no star for the all the requirement, right? So now uh now imagine we are in a virtual meeting, the two stakeholders and the call center agent and the back office agent. So we will listen to them, take notes and document what they say in bullet form, okay? So in the interview notes, uh call center agent, so now let's imagine we are on the call, okay? So let's go to here, uh you have bullets here. Okay, so this is what I will do, okay? Quickly, I will type. Quickly, I will type, um, it's always good to, good to send um. Interview notes, sorry, the uh meeting minutes after the call, okay? So you can keep ready, handle customer calls about. If you are wondering, uh, do I need to do all, everything, how? So that's what the required skills to be a business analyst, right? Listening, reading, it's should be sharpened and also communication skills, right? Then only you can, while someone is talking, you have to get the notes clear and end up the meeting, you need to send just to get the alignment, right? So handle customer calls about incorrect name, we are just um pretending these are the notes, um, we are talking, okay? So you have to, while listening, you have to type. None other skills required other than this one, uh, send correction form. So again, you can write best of your knowledge, uh. You can get, uh, you can send a email and asking, um, is your understanding correct or not, okay? But they expect as a BA, um, this is what the. Your job description, right? So let's start quickly, form. Uh, common. So now. Oh, you can ask permission if you can record the call, right? So if you miss anything, you can listen to the call and you can fill up this information, okay? So you have to ask that, okay, if I record the call. Process takes. Um. Save direct three to five business days, okay? And so these are raw notes, you are automated online submission. So this, let's say, these are the, so handle customer calls about incorrect names, send correction from via email. Uh, wait for a customer to return the form, uh, common, uh, common issues. Common issues, missing ID proof in complete form, process take three to five business days, want to automate, okay? Uh, so notice I'm not writing long paragraph, just key points. That will help me later define requirement, right? So no long notes, right? Uh, so now let's take the back office agent, okay? So let me put here so that you know who talk what, okay? Interview notes. We have two stakeholders, right? Uh, call. Okay, these are captured from call center agent. Okay, and next we interview. Notes from. Back office agent. Sorry. Let's do the same thing. Okay, so now we are listening to back office agent side. Form, you have to practice this one again and again, so you'll get it, okay? There is no, uh. Special course or anything you need to take when someone is talking. Listen carefully, that's it, you can even practice at home, um, when your parents talking. Or like friends talking, listen carefully and try to see if you can summarize in your notepad, if you have phone. You can just simply, um, after they talk, it's sound weird, but. You'll get some practice, right? So you don't need to wait, uh, to get a job to do this one. So you can practice at home, your day to day conversation and summarizing, okay? Uh, track request and. Do you have something for pain points? Yeah, so. Let's write here duplicates. Missing data, no. Tracking visibility. Okay, so what we need, uh, future state. Uh, automate document verification, digital workflow tracking, okay? Uh, automated. Okay, perfect, so we got all the interview notes. So at this stage, I am focusing on understanding the pain points, we don't jump solution yet. So we just capture what's not working, right? So whatever they said us, we are not asking here, this is what the company, we just simply captured this one, okay? Uh, so let's summarize what we learn and start um thinking about how this translates into potential requirement, right? Um. Okay, I think I can transform this one, we have our own version, okay? This one can have. So this is what the stakeholders are telling us because we will have our own version, okay? Um. Let's write our understanding, so now you listen to them, right? Remember, listen, so next we document, okay? Now listening part is complete and we even document that one, so now our understanding, okay? This is your business analysis. Okay, let's write what we understand, so this you can write manual, email. Uh, best process and missing documents. And incomplete, you see idea, one thing, simple name correct, um, how many time? You have to record it and listen it, this is what business analysis, right? Oh. Notification system. And errors in Excel. Because you can use when you are talking to your team, and this is very important tracking, okay? So decide future state, so this is you are documenting, okay, step number two. Okay, you are documenting, you haven't create, this is story for to create user stories, um, after the call. Or during the call or whenever you are ready, online, uh, submission. ID proof upload with validation. So why I'm saying there are different type of ID? So you need to implement that one, is it, what are the valid type of ID? Workflow. For back office, uh, review. Request tracking and notification. System, okay? So now let's start framing this as early draft requirement, okay? Um, we included this one, so you can use Word or anything. Uh, let me update this one, okay, so you meet them, so you see, um, we identify the stakeholder. We didn't write the project overview, um. We should have write the project overview. Let me write one line, okay, so you don't need more detail, what is our goal, um, convert. Paper based name correction into an online. Uh, self. Workflow, okay? You can add more detail, okay, and just for simplicity, let me update this one, let's see how this look. So we have the project overview, stakeholders, um, stakeholders, we can bring the stakeholders back from here, um. Okay, we can type, uh. For us, uh, we have. We have call center agent, um, what else? Sorry. Okay, uh, okay, compliance officer and back office agent, okay? Okay, we can paste this, uh. Okay, so we have stakeholders listed, current process we have, interview notes we have. So these are the notes you have to take it during the call, you can, after that you can update this one. So now, um, after all the discussion. How we can get the potential requirement, okay? So I will type here. If you want to list it down here, you can list it down, otherwise you can go back to your working page, whatever the page you are using. Uh, you can put it here as well, and once you convert here, you can. Uh, once you have user story, you can list the user story, then you can clean up this page and get a sign up on the requirement, okay? Uh, I'm going to use conference, so we'll continue this one, okay? So let's put one, two, three, four into a bullet here. Okay, so these are system requirement, okay? System functionality, okay? System should allow customers to submit. So now you are bridging the gap, right? Like first you listen to the stakeholders, right? And now you are writing requirement for the system, for development system. So this is the real example for business analysis. Upload in, now they said only ID validation right here. So now you have to think what are the type of ID you need to. Uh, validate JP G. Or like if you are wondering where should I get this one, you can have a chat with your technical folks. Uh. Validated that all required fields are fill before submission. Okay, and what should I, back office. User should be able to approve or reject the reject. Reject the request digitally. Oh, sorry. Digitally. And customer should receive real time. Time status update, okay? So this is how slowly move from stakeholder conversation to a structured requirement, right? So system should allow customer to submit name correction, uh, request online, system should accept ID proof upload JP. These are the format, system should validate that all required fields are will be post submission, back office user should be able to approve the. Um, rejected request digitally, customer should receive the real time status update, okay? So all right, that completes our day one session. Today we learn how to capture requirements through the stakeholder interviews and we document them in conference and convert. Early insight into digital eye into initial requirement, so remember. So every BA project start like listen, so this one, I'll empathize again, listen, right? Listen to the idea, um, and capture, right? We document, right? So after you listen, you capture the interview notes right here, to know you capture, right? What you capture and organize and summarize, so next one, pain points and future vision. And potential requirement and summarize, alright? So in day two, we'll move into, let me update this one, in day two, um, we'll move into a different project and. Experience a JD session, JAD session, where multiple teams come together to finalize requirement collaboratively. So if you are following alone, take a few minutes, uh, now to clean up your conference space, save your notes and add a short summary paragraph. The top and you have just completed first live requirement gathering session. So if you like this content, uh, please hit this like button and subscribe. If you think this is useful for a, a new fellow BA, uh, please do share and please support me. Thank you and have a good day.